All right, everyone. Good morning. Let's call the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, June 23rd.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Waymire?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right. Our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Live in person is Scott Dickinson, pastor of the Michigan Valley United Methodist Church.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner staff. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for your love for us, and we're kind of kidding here in the gallery, but that Franklin County really is a great place to live, and we are blessed by so many things. We had a little, that little storm came through the other night in our house. We had hail and rain and wind and all of that, but that's what we get when we live in Kansas, but we love it. But Lord, I've been praying lately for our food producers, those who are planting crops. I know a couple of farmers around us with all the rain have had to replant, and I think replant from that. So we have the kids to keep our farmers and our, all of our food producers, our beef producers and pork producers in our prayers because of, there's just so much going on, a lot of politics involved with all that, but we just want to pray for them, pray that you just keep them working hard and at it, and Lord, just help things to work out for them, keep them safe as they're out there doing their, doing their jobs. Continue to pray for our county, and Lord, we just are blessed to have good folks who take care of each other. Every, every day I hear of stories of people just reaching out and helping one another, that pay it ahead sort of thing, and I'm grateful for that, that people are doing that. We continue to pray for our law enforcement and EMS, EMTs, and all those folks that are out there doing the jobs they need to do, our fire department as they're out there in this heat some, some days when it's been so hot to put on, throw on all that gear. One morning I had a vest and I was outside and I was just, oh, man, hot. But we pray for them, pray for their safety, and Lord, that people would just see them out there doing the good works that they do. Lord, continue to watch over our commissioners, the decisions they make, help them be wise in all that they do, give them that wisdom, and we thank you for them and ask that you keep them well, keep their families well, and protect them. And Lord, again, we're grateful for where we are, where we live, and the people we live with, and help us just to help reach out to one another every day. We ask it in your name. Amen.
All right. Thank you. See anyone signed up for public comment? Our consent agenda today includes minutes from our study session on the 14th and the 15th, our meeting on the 16th, and tax change orders of the amount of negative $2,277.04. Anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. Our first item of business, we need to consider again holding a public hearing this time of July 7th to consider vacating a portion of the road, Hamilton Terrace, the 39 to 4100 blocks. And David, anything you need to fill us in on?
No, sir. I just, I simply failed to get this on the agenda like I needed to, and so we're combining that with the, you know, the notifications in the newspaper. We felt it was just best to start all over, so we've got all the letters and everything prepped, and the newspaper article, all of that stuff is ready to go, so I'd just ask to start this process over and...
Not an emergency. You've got plenty of time.
Yeah, yeah.
Abundance of caution. Want to make sure we get it done clean?
Yes, sir.
To the T.
Correctly.
All righty. Would anyone care to make a motion to hold a public hearing on July 7th to consider vacating 3900 to 4100 Hamilton Terrace from the east right away to Tennessee Road to the west right away to Texas Road?
Motion to approve.
Sergeant.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. Second item of business is consider entering into renewed employment agreement with Jamie Wilson for services as the county appraiser.
Yeah, so per Kansas law, the Board of County Commissioners actually appoints a appraiser, and Jamie's most recent contract is up. Before you is a new four-year agreement. There isn't, it's practically the exact same agreement that he signed before. We've updated the dates, and then we've given him the same raise that every employee gets on their anniversary, the two and a half percent merit. Other than that, everything is the same. Wholeheartedly recommend that we enter into this contract. Appraisers are not easy to find, and Franklin County is fortunate to have a good one, and so we'll stand for any questions that you have. Jamie's here. I'm sure he would as well. Otherwise, I'd just ask for a motion.
Any questions for Jamie? Any comments?
Is it required we do that every year?
Four years.
Every four years.
Every four years. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, did anyone care to make a motion to approve entering into a renewed employment agreement with Jamie Wilson and executing the resolution to that effect?
I would like to make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. Third item of business is consider awarding bid, a bid to upgrade the lighting in the annex building here in the common areas, and we also have an option to consider. Brandon Sands, our maintenance director, is here. Morning, Brandon.
Morning. Yeah, so we had the bid opening a little while ago for the lighting in the annex here. That bid covered everything in the hallways and the restrooms, and that came out to $11,009.90. We have an option if we want to include the commission chambers in that. That'll be an additional $3,335, so bring that total to $15,325 if we decided to do this room as well. And just to be clear, this is upgrading to those LED lights, the same ones that are in the remodel suite that we just finished.
And so in talking with Brandon about this, neither of us could recall whether or not, when we did our facility walkthrough, we talked about the common areas and the flooring, the walls, the lights, but we don't recall whether we talked about this room. So I recommended we give it as an option. I think if we take this first step, then we probably ought to look at the floors, and we don't have to, but, so the real question is, do you want to include this along with the hallways? And that's what we're really asking you to decide today, so...
Well, I'm in favor of doing this room too, along the hallways myself.
Is that the fluorescent bulbs?
That's correct.
And if you go into the remodeled space, the lights, I mean, they are LED and more energy efficient, but they are also significantly more aesthetically pleasing. They're, they're designed a lot different than this. So if you haven't been in there, it's, it's just a more refined, professional look.
I was kind of thinking, I was under the impression that we'd give this room a spruce up too when we did all this, so, it's a little... I'd be for it as well. Any other thoughts?
I was wondering about some of the tile ceilings, like some of them are discolored with water damage or something, and I don't know if you have any thoughts about that at the same time, or?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if I could even paint them. I don't know what you can do with them.
Yeah, we can still get those tiles and we can absolutely swap those out and get those freshened up as well.
And I, I wholeheartedly agree. I think the ceilings throughout this building, as we do the lights, I mean, I would like to see those replaced as, and we can make sure that we let you know when, you know, water has a funny way of making its way through down to the, so yeah, I'd like...
Tiles in the remodeled area, are they the, they a different style?
They may be slightly different than these, but they're very, very similar.
Okay, I thought they were the... It was back to the lights. Any other opinions, desire to or not to?
Good to go.
You go? Oh, you're for it?
Oh, no, no.
All right. Well, would anyone like to make a motion to approve awarding the bids, including the alternate for the commission chambers here?
I might that bid approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right, now we're to staff reports. Thanks, Brandon.
So, Colt, I would like to, and this was my mistake, but I'd like to double back to that second item. The board also needs to pass a resolution accompanying Jamie's employment agreement. That resolution is in front of you. It's just a formality that's required by statute, but if I could also get a motion to...
Specifically for that?
Specifically, Janet should have the number.
I assign the numbers at the office, so afterwards.
Yeah.
Just so we can do due diligence and make sure it's all right.
All right. Anyone care to make a motion to pass a resolution regarding the renewed employment agreement with Jamie Wilson for appraisal services for the county?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to that resolution.
Second. Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson? Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Colt. Just a couple of quick things. Next Wednesday, we're having our employee appreciation, 11:30 is when? 11:30 to 1:30 or 2:00. We don't have a hard cutoff time on the back end, but would love to see the five of you here, if you can make it. This will be kind of our first, I mean, we've started having meetings and whatnot and had a couple smaller things, but this will be our first bigger get together since the pandemic, and we've got several other things in the works that we're kind of brainstorming, so, but that'll be next Wednesday, and then David Lee can discuss this in more detail if he so chooses, but I want all of you to know that we have the proposal from SCS engineers for out at the landfill, ready to go. I asked him to hold off on presenting that this week because I want to look into, and there's a hefty price associated with that, and I want to look into Biden's stimulus package and just see if that would be potentially an eligible use of those funds, and if so, you know, have that discussion with all of you. I know I'm still, I'm going to say this a lot, I'm standing by this. I think it's going to be, we want to get through the budget season before we really take a deep dive into that, but if something like this is clearly eligible, then it's something we should take a long, hard look at, and so that's what we're currently doing with regard to that, but that'll be before you in all likelihood next week, so that's all I have.
Casey, anything? Albin?
Morning, Commissioners. Just wanted to, because you may hear from your constituents, and I want the public to know, today in the Kansas City paper and also on the Kansas City News, they announced that Hill Pet Food is locating in Tongonoxie, and I wanted you all to know that we were the runner-up for that business. We got, Colt and Derek were involved in that. Felt like we made a very good presentation. The city and the county worked together very well on that. It would have been a wonderful win for us, and so it's pretty disappointing that we didn't get that. I am going to talk some more to the folks in Tongonoxie and just find out what the tipping point was for us. What we were told by the company was it was their concern about workforce. Since it's in Tongonoxie, I'm scratching my head a little bit on that one, but certainly appreciate the fact that we were able to bid on it and participate in that, and just want you to know that we got awful close, and so if people ask you, why is that in Tongonoxie and not Ottawa, you have a little bit more background. I'm happy to share more on an individual basis, but I do want to compliment the county and the city. It was a really good team effort. Commerce was very involved in that, and I felt like we, we put a good foot forward, just wasn't, we didn't win, and unfortunately, economic development, second place is the same as last place, so we'll keep working on that. Just on a brighter note, we did submit an RFP through Commerce just yesterday for another company that's looking around, and so we'll see how that goes. We've got another company that was looking at us that is just on hold and basically because of material cost, and so I think we're starting to see some of that slowdown, some of the inquiries for companies that, that need to build a facility. But we are still in the game. We're still going, but just wanted to share that with you, so if you were asked, and if the community sees it and hears it was on the, I was having my coffee and heard it on the news this morning. Of course, we knew we had not won, won that contest, but didn't know exactly where until this morning, so just wanted to share that with you, and again, express my appreciation to Colt and to Derek for their leadership. They did a wonderful job. So we're, we're swinging, and we'll get one one of these days, so thanks.
And...
I have one question, Paul.
Yes, sir.
Then one more. D.C. came in, came in a long time ago. They're drawing people from a circle of about 100 miles. People are willing to drive 100 miles to work. Is that, is that...
We're not...
...over...
Yeah, they're not driving that far, but it's still, you know, in what we present, Roy, you're asking the right question. We do present a regional draw in how we do pull employees from, from the region. We have a labor basin that we pull from that's the surrounding counties and beyond, so it's about 10 county region, and so we do share that, so there would have been overlap with what Tongonoxie would have presented. But to me, our issue, and you'll hear more about this, I'm, like I said, I'm doing a housing study and some other things. I'm actually going to have some other conversation with some of our builders, but we need to, we need to figure out how to, how to accelerate our housing, pretty dramatically in Franklin County and specifically in Ottawa and Wellsville, and we've got an opportunity to do that. I'll be back with more information and share with you in the next few weeks, but that's part of it. The other part is working closely, which we are with our school district and Dr. Cobb's on pipelines through the high schools. I'm actually going to be visiting with Nathan over at Central Heights and working on appointment with Jerry at West Franklin to have the same conversation. So we're really working and focused on workforce and also going to talk to Dr. Bradbury, but we've just, we've got to catch up a little bit on that. Did I, did I answer your question, Roy? I'm sorry.
Well, it seemed like if you had a good job, people were willing to drive a long ways.
Yeah. We, we actually, Roy, you nailed it. You'll see, if you haven't seen it, their, their average wage is $60,000, and we told them, you're not going to have any problem filling jobs at $60,000 in Franklin County, but unfortunately, we just didn't win that discussion.
And I, I would echo Paul's sentiment, and, you know, we were all, all of us who worked on it were pretty gutted to learn that we didn't get this, but at the same time, I feel like we made a really good offer, and I will commend the city of Ottawa. I feel like they
Absolutely.
did an exceptional job of, of working as part of this partnership, and it was really a collective offer that we were all on board with. I know Commissioner Waymire spent a lot of time on this. I mean, so much time goes into these, and you, you know, I don't know, it just creates a, I don't know, you, you buy into it, and it creates such a strong desire to land, and you think about a company like this with the average wage of $60,000, like we, this, this was a tough one for us, but I don't know what else we could have done. I mean, I...
Effective as that project was with the wages, and then also the complement to local agriculture, we were aggressive.
Yes, we were.
Definitely decided, we put together an offer that we can go to bed, and if we don't get it, it's because they want to be somewhere else, but it's not because we left anything on the table. Now, how many people do you think they probably started out with when they were looking? How many locations?
Oh, yeah.
Dozens?
Dozens to...
So, I mean, but like you said, bridesmaids, not brides, so it didn't...
Yeah, yeah.
But we're getting to that doorstep an awful lot, and it's, I think it's just a matter of time, and Paul's doing a heck of a job, like getting us there. It's just, to some extent, it's got to be a numbers game, like to make as many final cuts as we're starting to make. I think it's just a matter of time, but that one hurt. I mean, that, that one hurt.
That one. But I also want to compliment you folks in the city. We are in the game because of Proximity Park. If we didn't have Proximity Park, we wouldn't be having any of these discussions. So while I know that was a major investment and a big decision, it will pay off. I have no doubt of that, but I do want the public to know, we, we would not even be in the game without Proximity Park. We had another business that was interested in coming, and they needed a rail hub, and the landowner wouldn't even talk to them about selling. So the fact that we control the, the land is a major, major element to attracting the industry, and so I do compliment the commission here and the commission of the city of Ottawa for their wisdom in that decision, so thank you.
All right. Hey, Brandon, you have any updates for us on the projects that are going on?
Yeah, just a couple of brief updates here. The District Court HVAC project is pretty much wrapped up. The controls guys are just doing a couple tiny little things, but that is, that project is done. The boiler in the jail that we, that you guys approved not long ago, they got started on that. The old boiler is gone, waiting for the new one to come in, and they'll be getting ready to swap out that water heater right next to it here real soon, so real excited to have that one going. This past Saturday, we were out here laying down some stripes on the annex parking lot.
That's good.
Thank you, thank you. Unfortunately, we ran out of paint, so we've got some more ordered, and when we get that in, we'll get back at it and get it done, so that's all I got.
All right. Any questions for Brandon while we have them?
Thanks, Brandon.
Thanks. David Lee?
All right, so we had another storm blow through Sunday, and so we, we've had crews out the last couple of days, including we brought our noxious weed sprayers. They weren't able to get out spraying, so they came and helped us with this, but spent quite a bit of time the last couple of days cutting up trees and chipping things up and that sort of thing to get that, that area cleared. Seems like the worst hit was from Rock Creek in Idaho, kind of southeast to Highway 59 or thereabouts, a lot of trees down, some property damage as well, so had crews working on that. We've also, since last week, we've replaced three large crossroad tubes, one on Texas Road north of Jackson, another on Nebraska Terrace north of Stafford, and then the biggest one on Virginia, just north of Lane on the blacktop. We, we've done the work, we've compacted the material. The road is still closed. We're waiting on kilo construction to come in and patch that area, so we've got the road closed with a detour going around it. We just asked folks to, to be patient with us while we coordinate with the contractor to get that project buttoned up. Today, we're starting a ditching and road build, road rebuild project on Stafford Road. This will encompass most of a two-mile stretch between Ohio and Tennessee. We're going to rework a bunch of the ditches through that area and bring that material into the road and get it compacted and incorporated. We expect that, that project to last, oh, through the end of the week, as long as weather cooperates. Once that, that's done, we've got a similar project on Eisenhower, starting at about Jackson Road. That one will probably be a little bit longer project, two to three miles on that one, but we're hoping to get that started next week. So in addition to that, we are also working on Old 50. We're going to be putting some material into the worst of the edge rutting that's going on there. We're going to add some material. Later on this year, we will actually go in, when we have three or four days of consecutive time, we'll go in and pull those shoulders again and, and get that compacted in, but that's always going to be an ongoing project for us. Derek mentioned the landfill project. I think that it's prudent that we take this a little bit of extra time to research, to see if there's funding available. It is a, you know, it's a two-year project, so the financial requirements for that project are pretty steep up front, but it's definitely a project that we need to do. We just want to make sure that we're getting started on the, on the right foot there. And then finally, I mentioned it last week, on Monday, we will be kind of going through the Roden Bridge and Noxious Weed Recycling site, and we'll start that discussion, and, and I'll have some material for you to look at, and, and we'll, we'll see where that leads. That's all I've got.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Did you have anything, Jamie? Come on up. Sorry, Debbie. All right. Well, thank you. Commissioners comments, board reports. Don?
The only thing I really attended last week or so is we had our first meeting of the risk management team yesterday. I think HR did a great job of getting us started, and there were several team members there, Derek and, and David, Brandon, and several other people was there to get this kicked off, and what I liked about it, it's going in with the idea of not how we're going to spend some money, but how, how can we save some money? And Sari did a good job of getting it started, and it was kind of a feeling process I felt yesterday, just to see, because it's the first risk management thing they've had, you know? They've had safety committees before, but not risk management. Sari did a real good job of putting the facts and figures together for us, and it was a good, good starting part to start thinking about, you know, what their next step is. I just hope she did a good job of doing it, putting it together. I think it, I think it'll be a quarterly, we're talking, and I think it'll be a good day on there.
Maybe just a little more context. So the purpose of this committee is, Sari is working on a program through K-CAM that will provide for a, up to a 3% reduction in our annual insurance premiums, provided we meet certain metrics. One of those is to have a risk management committee, and that committee has to meet, you know, so many times a year, and so yesterday was our first meeting, several other metrics, and it'd probably be a good use of her time just to come in here and talk through that, just so all of you understand, but anything we can do, obviously, to, you know, like so many things, insurance isn't getting cheaper, and so anything we can do to try and bring that number back down, but, but that's what the, the point behind the committee, and certainly, we feel like there will be other benefits. I mean, I think talking about practical things we can do to help lower our experience rating, so, yeah, no, I think you did a good job with it, Don.
Only thing I might mention is kind of honor Sue Farrell's passing last week, past County Commissioner. I had the pleasure of serving with her. The only two ladies that served in the last over 20 years, and the, got to serve with both of them, and, and great to do that, you know? I've always been a big promoter that we need more ladies to, to think they can go ahead and go for it, you know? And I guess a lot of them maybe don't feel like, you know, they have it, but I believe they do have it, so, you know, it's kind of sad. I appreciate serving with her. The only thing I regret, I've had to say this seven times now since, since I became a county commissioner, I've lost seven people that I've served with as county commissioners.
That's all I got.
I have nothing to add, Cole.
The city of Ottawa in the last week, at their regular meeting, they approved their audit from last year, and then as our study session, they had a fairly long one because they're working through their budget, and they had several departments that presented their budget for this next year, and then they had another land bank meeting, and they're getting closer to getting those properties at the Cove, ready to, I think they have a little bit of conflict on, on how they want to come to up to that value among the members of the commission, but at least they're getting closer. And I was also going to mention the passing of Sue Farrell. I think that every person that sits, has sat in these chairs over the years, has been a part of where Franklin County is now, so, and that's all I have.
Well, I sure was Sue Farrell too, and I'll just bring up one story. It's kind of fun with that, with the groundbreaking for the new 59 highway. I was chairman that year, and I had to be out of town for the groundbreaking, and Sue was vice chairman at that time, and she said, well, I got to go out there and give it, give a talk, and I said, well, all right, the talk, and all you have to do is read it. So, anyway, that was the groundbreaking they had. Anyway, that was the groundbreaking, they had Reno Road and Montana Road when they started the new 59 project, way back in 2006 or 2005, and so that's my Sue Farrell story. Like Don said, we have served with several former commissioners that have passed away, but we honor their memory.
All right. I also don't have anything to add, and with that, we look for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.